Gaveling us back into session at six thirty eight. Thank you, everybody, for joining. Why don't we start off with public input? Anybody have anything fun to say? So many people, nothing? No? All right. All right, so why don't we go to the student report, Ms. Nickerson?
Hi.
Thanks for joining us.
Of course, thank you for having me. So right now, for notable academic matters is that the PSAT registration closed today, which is open for juniors and seniors, and that will take place on October eighteenth. But I just looked at an email that it was extended until this Thursday, I think, for registration. So that's coming up, and then senior rankings for their class rankings came out last Friday. For our notable fine arts matters, we had the school play Water for Elephants rehearsals have started for that. Notorious, the high school a cappella group, performed at Apple Fest and Town Day these past two weeks. And then the Broadway cabaret is coming up on Friday. And Mascar's is hosting their annual haunted playground on October eighteenth, so that's coming up soon, which is exciting. And then for notable athletic matters, the first home football game is gonna be next Friday, so that's exciting. And then for some sports, boys soccer is seven oh one, girls soccer is six one one, and golf is at one ten, but they won on senior night. And then volleyball is ten to one, field hockey is seven three, football is three to zero. And then just for some other information, there's gonna be Picture Day retakes on October tenth twentieth, and club signups end tomorrow, which means that if anyone's wanting to participate in a club, they have to make sure that they pay by tomorrow. And then the homecoming ticket sale ends on October thirty first. And then lastly, juniors and seniors were invited to meet with college representatives. I think today might have been LaSalle University, but they are doing a lot of different ones, so that's pretty cool.
Nice.
And then for my student work report, I have a project from my psychology class, and the assignment, you probably can't see this, but the assignment was to make a collage of a brain. So we cut out, like, from different magazines, from the different parts of the brain, like...
Dr. Daley heard "brain," and he's like, "I'm all over that."
For example, so for the hippocampus, it's like memories, so we might have cut up, like, old pictures to, like, show that maybe it's someone is remembering.
Awesome.
Or the hypothalamus, which responds to hunger and thirst, and then different, like, body temperatures. It might be someone being cold, or it might be food and stuff like that, so that was really cool.
Now, is this a topic of interest to you, or what?
Psychology.
Yeah.
I kind of took it to see if I would find it interesting, and I did, so yeah, I think it's really cool.
Great. And what are your other interests? See, we're gonna put you on the spot now.
Oh, well, this year I'm in my school musical, so I'm doing Water for Elephants. So that's what I'm doing right now, and it's super fun.
That's a lot, that's great. Anybody have questions?
Do you know how the band did the competition this weekend?
The band?
The band had a competition, I think, this past week.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Do you know how they did?
There's one upcoming this, next weekend.
The home one this weekend.
Or was it this weekend, or was it maybe?
It's this weekend.
It's Saturday on the field.
It's this Saturday, okay. I thought it was last Saturday. Yeah. Looking forward to the musical, so congratulations, I know you got a good part, so...
Thank you.
One of the only underclassmen, so...
I'm an upperclassman this year.
I know, well, you're a junior, right?
Junior, yeah.
One of the only non-seniors, though. Questions now?
Thank you.
You are more than welcome to stay, but if you choose to do something that's a lot more fun, we will not have a problem.
Oh, thank you. I do have a piano lesson to get to, so...
Wonderful. Have fun.
All right, thank you.
Are you singing the cabaret, or not?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good.
All right. Thank you guys for having me.
Bye.
Thank you so much.
Come back. Okay, so why don't we go from here, we're gonna go a little bit out of order, we're gonna go to a staffing update, so we'll go into that.
So just wanted to take a moment here to recognize there's several of our teachers in the district who have earned their professional status, because they've been with the district for at least three years, working consecutively. They start here in North Reading with an intensive first year of a mentor program that Mr. Colleen runs with mentor coordinators. Then they have years two and three of that same program and process where they are using our educator evaluator system and going through all of the different tasks that are required of them. And so we'd like to just take a moment to celebrate earning professional status. It's really a commitment of the district to these educators, and also it's reciprocal in that they have chosen to be with us, and so we'd just like to celebrate. So I just have a small token of our appreciation, it's just a little pin, but it just symbolizes your professional status here in the district. So if you just come forward, and we can give a round of applause, Megan Klein-Peter from the Little School. Is Rebecca here, Rebecca Darty? Rebecca was at the Little and is now also at the Hood School, correct? Sorry. Don't have them out of order. Congratulations, thank you. Julia, stopless? Let's see. Lily Dow. Julia's art teacher. And Jacqueline Rogers. Roy Hirsch. Michael Hirsch. And Brittany Bythrow. And Rachel Vitale. Congratulations, Rachel's at the Little School.
High School.
And Roy Medias, I don't see. Is there anyone else that I missed somewhere? All right, so thank you, thank you all so much for coming in tonight. Yeah, the school committee, I don't know if you wanted to say anything to them as well?
Well, we're a very batch-heavy school committee here, for a long part, but I, so I don't know all of you personally, but I had the very, 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 very good fortune of having Ms. Dow for my fifth grader, and like, just such a gem, so glad she's here with professional status, as Ms. Bythrow also incredible teachers. So I'm sure, based on the two representatives I have personal experience with, you're all fabulous. So congratulations.
Thank you. I'll just jump in and say, like, I think one of the great things about North Reading is that we keep people for so long, and so it's nice to see that you guys are making a commitment to the district. Sadly, the last couple of years, we've had to reduce staff, and so, you know, that's noticed by us five all the time and talked about all the time, and so we're happy to have you, and I know so many of the people here have started, I mean, Dr. Daley started as an assistant principal and now he's superintendent, and, you know, so many people here have started in different positions and moved up, and so hopefully, you know, we'll be celebrating you guys when you retire in, you know, forty or fifty years, and so, you know, but we're appreciative that you're making a commitment to North Reading. And the other thing to note is even if you're in the first few years, we've seen some of you before the committee, you guys have come and presented on different things, and so it's just good to see people get involved right away, so thank you guys for the commitment.
First off, you're allowed to retire before forty or fifty years.
I'm trying to get a little more.
I'm aware of the contract, I'm pretty sure you can retire before that. No, thank you for everything, we're super happy to have you, so thank you.
Yeah, I've been able to have some interaction with only a couple of you, I might think I'm about to have more interaction with Ms. Bythrow and Ms. Vitale, had my four-year-old, so from every single...
Actually, yes, that's true.
Yeah, every, every single level, and actually, I've had some interaction with Ms. Dow. I had no idea that you were new, this is fairly new. I feel like it's been old hat, and you guys are all wonderful teachers, so thank you.
Thank you, also, my, so mine date back to preschool, when it was Ms. Becca at the time, so then they've been watching my kids since they were three years old and helping them to grow into the kids that they are now, so thank you. You know, similar to what Scott said, I was here the other day for the, for the middle school walkthrough, and so, so many teachers, you know, twenty-five, twenty-eight, I think there was one thirty-one-year teacher here, and it's clear that, you know, we find the right teachers, they stay in district, they love it here, and we love having the committed teachers that you are, offer all of our students, and it's clear, every year, I just love seeing the tenure that we have, because it means that we're doing something right, so I think we have, this is a great day to celebrate, so thank you, I'm glad that we do this every year, because I think it's really special for you to, you know, we very much value everything that you bring for all of our kids.
I guess what we're saying is you're trapped. Great. All good.
Round of applause for her.
And just like the student reps, you could stay or you can leave, so...
And many of them have been here in other capacities, different capacities, students, teachers, paraprofessionals, but this celebrates their three years as educators in the district. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. McKay, for being here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll note, you're the only principal that came, Dr. McKay, so we'll be sure to point that out. There you go.
Three demerits for the batch, right there.
What was that?
Three demerits for the batch, right there.
There you go.
I just started off the... Thank you.
Still one remaining little schooler. Small but mighty.
We can, if you want, we can go through the rest of the staffing later from the list.
Sure.
Okay. Let's get back to regularly scheduled programming, we've done public input, we've done student report, let's go on to continued business, specifically review of the town meeting articles. And there's gonna be a presentation that's given, actually, it's gonna be given to the select board tonight, but I think it's appropriate that we go through the same thing here.
I'm not sure if you'd like to, this has been updated, so you may wanna see the slides if you can't see them.
Yeah.
So, thank you, everyone. As recently as last week, Thursday, I believe, Michael? We had the Massachusetts School Building Authority here with us, so this includes all of the most up-to-date information. As we discussed at our last meeting, we are hoping to share a presentation at town meeting, and we're excited to share an update on this entire project and how it's continuing to evolve with new information as we receive. As you can see, we have pictures here of the J. Turner Hood and the EF Little School.
Just if you were, it's not sharing on the...
Not, not sharing, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. No, that was, that was the date. Twenty seventeen, yep. Yeah, I will note that all these dates, there's, there's, the dates, they're adopted, the dates that are completed, there's sort of a range of dates. So, you know, there's, there's, there's many different dates that are hard to track down, trying to figure out exactly when these modules were approved and put in and everything, but... So just as a summary, the Mass School Building Authority created in two thousand and four, it's a quasi-independent government authority, and that helps us to work with local communities to create affordable, sustainable, and energy-efficient schools. And so I think it's important to note that every, every five years, apparently, but there was a large gap due to COVID, there are surveys conducted by the schools, and they come in and they look at all of the schools in the Commonwealth to sort of understand better the condition that they are in. It's not the sole factor in determining whether a building is ready to be, or in need of an update, but it is, it is a contributing factor. And something that they shared at their last meeting was that, you know, that the date of the, the date a building was built is not necessarily as much of an indicator as how it's been maintained, what additions and improvements have been done over time. And so our most recent survey was conducted in two thousand and sixteen, there was one in two thousand and twenty-five that we do not have the results for yet, but that report in two thousand and sixteen would put the facilities into four different categories, the first two being the building is good condition, the second is generally good condition, three is fair to poor, and four would be poor condition. And I'm happy to share that, as we would hope, our high school and middle school, as well as the bachelor school, our newest schools, are all in category one in the two thousand and sixteen report, and that our other two schools, the J. Turner Hood and the EF Little School, are in generally good condition with a few building systems that may need some attention. So just to put things in perspective, in a neighboring district where they rebuilt a elementary school with about five hundred and sixty students, that came in at a hundred and thirty million dollars, with a reimbursement from MSBA for forty-four and eighty-five million that was to the town. So just to put in perspective what a new school would cost, if that's something we were thinking about. So just a little bit of background on the Hood School, built in nineteen fifty-nine, there was an addition in nineteen sixty-nine, another addition in nineteen ninety-eight, modulars were built in two thousand and two, we had some boiler updates in two thousand and twenty-four, we are currently in, just completed phase one of a roof repair, which was in this summer, that's phase one. There are still some updates that are needed at the Hood School in terms of its automation system, its windows, the Hood School is, sort of, has the most projects that are still out there that need to be completed. EF Little School built in nineteen fifty-eight, there were additions in nineteen seventy and nineteen ninety-nine, modulars from two thousand and one, there was a new roof project that, as Mr. Buck pointed out, started in two thousand and seventeen, continued for several years, and there were window replacements in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So currently, what we're talking about, what brought us into this project, were the modular units. So there is a modular at the Little School for two classrooms, there's a modular with four classrooms at the Hood School. These are some photos, these photos are of the Hood School, and they're over twenty years old and well past their existing life expectancy and need to be replaced, significant deterioration, as you can see here. For the Little School, you can see there are also areas where there are leaks in the roof, and we had an engineering firm that came out and looked at different options for repair replacement, and the suggestion that was made at a school committee meeting here by our facilities director about, you know, what is the, what is the cost to explore for a permanent structure that could provide us with something that's longer-lasting and more viable moving forward? So that is what we looked into. So currently, when we think about the use of these spaces, we have them being used for pre-K at the Little School. They are currently not even in use this year, we have, we did not need to use those spaces because of lower enrollment in the pre-K and kindergarten at that school, just for this year. Those spaces really are not in great shape, and so we opted to use other classroom spaces instead. At the Hood School, this year, we're using them for special education, for digital learning. Of note, at the Hood School, there are some kindergarten classrooms that are being housed in rooms that were not designed for early childhood, so, for example, there's not a bathroom, smaller sink, they have to use a different space for those facilities at the Hood School. And so when we think about some of the issues that this causes in terms of equity of facilities having special education, classrooms, for example, in a space that's not up to par with other areas of the building, that is a concern as well. So the vision that we have for the future is an expanded early childhood center that would allow for the centralization of pre-K. This could allow for some possible expansion that could support our demand, we currently have a lottery system, as we've discussed many times. And what is newer information coming from MSBA is that this, because the modular unit, if, if a wing was built at the school to replace the modular unit, certain things would click in in terms of updates at the Hood that would be needed, but this would be an opportunity to also do those updates related to the Hood School as a part of this project under the MSBA process. So when we went through our study, we had a thirty-five thousand dollar study, it was approved through part of the capital improvement plan, the options that were looked at, and these are slightly modified to, for clarity, keep the existing modular building and renovate it with the recommendations. Option two would be to demolish the existing modulars and provide new modular building in place, either one at the Little, one at the Hood, or even if we put two modulars at the Hood School. And then option three would be to demolish the existing modular building and provide a new permanent wing. The study did not look at option two as being all located at the Hood, but that could be a possibility if that's the way that we explored it. But the prices and everything are built upon replacing them where they are currently located.
Number one, what does with recommendation mean?
So the recommendations that would be made, so just keeping them, but then also the recommendations from the, the team that's doing the work, so that did this study. So what to replace, you know, the study is a hundred and five pages, and it recommends replace the plumbing, fix the roof, fix this, fix that, so the recommendations from the, from the evaluation. So when we looked at option one from this study, it was not recommended, and part of that is that there's a much shorter useful life for modular units, so these units are already nearly twenty-five years old, so even any fixing or, or upgrades to the existing buildings now would only extend their life for a few more years. Without any escalations, as you know, obviously, the costs are higher now than they were when we conducted this study, but it's approximately one point three million, again, that was to leave it at the Little School and to leave it somewhere else. Do you question?
No.
Just wanted to make sure. Option two was to demolish the existing modules and provide a new modular building in place, that would be with, with some escalations that we factored in for the higher end, it was between four million and four point six five million. It does not include a centralized early childhood center, it could, if we were to do that, but that obviously would be an additional cost, because we would have to grade and improve the grounds at the Hood School. There could be some requirements about updates at the Hood and/or the Little Schools with the modular units, we're, we're working on that with the building inspector in, in town as well, but again, those modular units have a much shorter lifespan, so that could be an alternative, that could be an option that we would consider. That was one of the ideas that was recommended from the group, and then the third option was the demolishing of the modulars and a new permanent wing. This would involve an MSBA process that we're going through now, we could, we could do this without MSBA as well, but we are following the MSBA process, because obviously the MSBA process provides a reimbursement for eligible costs. From what we've gathered, the schematic design and feasibility study for that process, we should prepare for that to possibly be between seven hundred thousand and two million dollars to look at what this project would, would require. It would require code updates at the Hood School, and so that would put into effect some things that we would need to do, just because we're building on that, building all of the code would then need to come up, but if you look at that as the opportunity that creates, the, the message that I heard from our meeting on Thursday was this may be an opportunity to be able to make some of those needed improvements at the Hood School, whether it's with the windows, the automation systems, possibly some of the HVAC systems, all through this project, and to make that school a viable option for students for the foreseeable future. And this would include that concept of an early childhood center with that expanded pre-K potential. So just a little bit of the timeline, back in June twenty, recent timeline, June two thousand and twenty-four, we had our modular feasibility study that was approved at town meeting, and October twenty-four, we presented with cost estimates from the thirty-five thousand dollar study. Option two, replacing the modules, or option three, the permanent structure, were the two pieces that we presented, it was suggested from that group to then bring it forward to the MSBA to see, and we submitted a statement of interest back in April of two thousand and twenty-five. Just last week, they conducted what's called a senior study, so out of all the submissions that were selected, I believe there were seventeen that, that made it to that cut, and there, of those, there are fourteen that are in the group that we're in that they are presently considering. We are then making some presentations, so obviously tonight, we're going to be at both the school committee and then at the select board, and we would do an informational presentation at town meeting, just so that this is on everyone's radar. We're not, at this time, making a specific ask at that meeting, we are going to then respond to MSBA on October eighth, we have to let them know that we're interested, and we have to really talk about the scope and of our project, this concept of an early childhood center for the wing would be what we would communicate. We then would be waiting for them in December, so if they notify us that we are accepted into the program, we have to be invited in for the eligibility period, and then there are many deliverables, as you can see, over the next several days, leading up to what would be a feasibility study agreement. That feasibility study agreement would also include that price that we would have to, we would obtain, and we would need approval at town meeting, possibly a special town meeting, but we feel that that two hundred and seventy days would actually bring us to our June meeting, so most likely at the June meeting, we would be looking for that approval to begin the process for that feasibility study. And from there, if we then are in the, the full program, there would be project funding and MSBA reimbursement. So are there any questions?
So just with respect to... No, no, sorry, just specific to the bullet.
Yeah.
Town meeting approval needed for the two million dollar, for the schematic design, right, and there'd be subsequent...
There would be other, exactly, there would be other approvals after that for the actual project that's... So that's just to obtain the funding from any source for feasibility and schematic design. So, big picture, this has gone from a smaller project that would be a modular replacement and some kind of a permanent structure, the way MSBA is seeing this is that this is an opportunity for us to possibly, you know, outfit and support the Hood School moving forward.
And from, let me just, before I comment, from, from my perspective, it's also an opportunity for us to get reimbursement for things that we ordinarily would have put in for, for capex budget. I mean, we've put in, what was mentioned in here, we've put in for windows, we haven't done all the windows, we do select windows, ones that need it, that's gonna continue over time, all of the things that they're gonna recommend are things that we almost certainly would have paid for, for, by a hundred percent from the town budget over the course of time, so this is an opportunity for, you know, whatever percentage they're gonna, they're gonna offer to us for the overall budget, for us to, to get ahead of the game a little bit.
Correct. So I have a few comments and, and questions. I guess general, general comments, option number one, I don't think is an option, I don't think we, spending one point three million dollars to extend the life for a few years is just stupid, so I don't think that's an option. I think the real question is two versus three, as Jeff was saying, if we can get some updates that we need, the only challenge with that is it makes it more expensive when MSBA is involved, and some of the things we probably wouldn't have done that we have to go do to get the code, so you're, you're offsetting that with things that bring you up the code that you might not have done anyways, but still, I'd be curious to see the numbers on that, like, what exactly, what projects we're looking at. The, two, two specific questions, number one, utilization as a early childhood development center, I know there's been discussions about what is reimbursable, is that a reimbursable, is that something that is reimbursable under MSBA or not?
Yes, we clarified that on Thursday.
Okay, good.
Specifically asked that question.
Yes, because that, that's been suggested by somebody that, like, it couldn't be for that purpose, so it can be reimbursable still? And then the second thing is, when you, you talked about centralizing at the Hood School, will the centralizing of kindergarten at, well, can you speak a little bit to the advantages of doing that? I'm guessing there's potentially some cost savings, and then are there other, are there other, are there other value of doing that?
Sure.
Because we're not, I'm imagining we're not splitting between three schools, and you have imbalanced, you know, class size and everything else, at least for the kindergarten, is that the case?
Correct, I, they did ask us whether this would include kindergarten, I'm not sure that we're able to do that capacity-wise.
Okay.
I think this would be about pre-K.
Okay.
And our special education programs that are, that are related to pre-K would be all together. We currently have two programs at the Little School and two programs at the Hood School, as well as our, our integrated classrooms, so that would continue. So what, what this would allow for, the centralization also allows for the centralization of staffing, for collaboration, for curriculum planning, for design, logistically, for drop-off pickup, and for all of that work to be centralized in one place.
I would just suggest for town meeting, maybe really highlighting in a little bit more detail some of the advantages of option three, because I think there will be some, you know, logistical and potentially cost savings, and, yeah. But again, I was here when we were talking about it before, and for years, it was talking about, like, we're gonna have to replace the modulars, but I think it's a far better use of our time and money to do, for about the same cost, do a solution that would be a permanent solution.
And, and that's part of what the, that's not part of it, is exactly what the feasibility study will tell us.
Right.
What is the delta between option two and option three, so?
Do we know, just, I got a few questions. Do we know in, in the two thousand and twenty-five report, or do we have an idea? Are, are either the hood or the little gonna fall out of category two with the category three, or are we confident they're gonna remain in category two?
So I, we don't know that, we can't predict that. I, I did, it was anecdotally, a gentleman said at the meeting, when I walked in the lobby here, I said, what am I even doing here? That's what he said. So this is in the hood lobby. The modulars obviously is a different story. So they, they're saying that as an opportunity for us to actually get considered for hood upgrades, this is sort of a way to do that. Is, is, is what I, what I understood. By building this wing, we now can get the, the rest of the hood up to speed. Whereas if it was just come on in and work at the hood or build a new school, there was no appetite. You know, again, they, they're not sharing everything, but that was the comment.
Right.
From one of the members, what am I even doing here? Because they're going to schools that were built in nineteen twelve.
Right, and that's a genesis of my question, really, which is, we've done a great job maintaining our school. We know the community has a number of other projects, like the fire station, potential senior center. So if we can provide options for the town to save significant amount of money, right, we just saw Redding. Spent a hundred and thirty million dollars on, on their school right down in Haverhill Street. So how can we, if we can do it for significantly cheaper and allow us to, the town to focus on those high pry projects, I think that would be really smart. I guess the other question was, do we know, if you look at the, the timeline. Do we know when, at what point during the timeline would we understand commitment from the MSBA that we would get reimbursement? Like, how much of a gamble is it if we go into that feasibility study? If that makes sense?
There would be reimbursement, I think it's.
Yeah, so my understanding is the December, if we, we get invited into their, their queue. And then we have to just secure the, we have to secure the funding for, for the schematic and feasibility. If, if we can show evidence that we're gonna, the town will support our portion and our, you know, through the process, starting with this, this schematic design, the feasibility study. Then we would get a level of reimbursement. Generally, it's around between forty-five and forty-eight percent.
That's genesis of my question. So in December, before we ask for a penny, we're gonna know whether or not we're in and get, we would get reimbursed if we move forward with the project.
Yes.
We won't know.
I thought they just said we have to have the approved funding, so we have to ask for the.
We have to get the funding approved.
So we have to have, we have to have a town meeting warrant vote before.
Agree, but some, but basically, if we were to invest, we, we know at that point, if we invested, that appropriate the funding at town meeting, that we will be reimbursed. And we'll know that before we even go down this path.
That's, that's what being invited in would mean. What we won't know is the cost and we won't know what the reimbursement is. Once we've shown our commitment on all these and they've given their, again, there's many people that are not there. The other point I will make, they made this very clear, is that a funding cycle is every year. So just because you don't get it, just reapply right again next year, that's what they said to us. So don't think that that doesn't mean it's not a valid project. They also made it very clear to us that funding a project like this does not put us at the back of the line if we needed something at the little school next year. It, it wouldn't, it doesn't, they're all independent of each other.
They start over every year and look at it with a fresh look. So it's almost like in January, a new, a whole new process is gonna start, right, once we find out in December whether we're in this year or not.
Well, and, and I, to Tim's point, I think I like, I really like the point of looking at it as, as a facilities master's plan. And just saying that like, part of what we're trying to do is fix the modulators, but part of what we're trying to do is extend the life of the schools. So that we don't, so that a school doesn't end up on the, on the to-do list in the future. And so this is a very small investment if you're looking at being able to get other upgrades that are needed to the school itself. It's like by, I think that's a really good point to point out for town meeting is that like, by doing this and by adding it on and doing everything else. But all this would only be, it would only be then at the hood, not the little, correct?
Correct.
Because all the upgrades would only be at the hood.
I mean, if you look at our capital plan for the next five years, which will be presented soon. Most of our large projects are all focused at the hood. So if you're looking at the BMS system, building management system. Windows, completion of the, the roof. Security, you know, upgrades, alarm system, access control system upgrades are all hood focused.
Could we, by, by having to do the demolition at the little school, that doesn't, obviously, we don't have to be in code compliance, but could we get any projects at the little? Approved that way too or not? Because it's a two building. Because there's at least a.
They're looking at this as a hood only.
Okay, and then, by my only, just out of curiosity about the one, two, three, four ranking. Do you happen to know what the high school, the middle school are at when, before they were redone here?
I can look into that, I, I can go back, yeah, I can go back to.
Yeah, I'm just curious of those early reports, if they dropped down to level three, for example, or.
Sure. Yeah, we can go back to two thousand and five, I just didn't look that up for this.
I'm just curious.
I'm still a little confused, so what exactly, there's gonna be a lot going on at the June town meeting. What exactly are we gonna be asking people to vote on at the June town meeting?
Nothing, there's no vote at June town meeting, the, unless, unless someone proposes that.
You mean the October town meeting?
Do you mean October? No, I mean June, the two hundred and seventy days.
So June would be the feasibility study. Money for feasibility.
Okay, so that's a seven hundred to two million, because that seems like a pretty large, are we gonna be able to get that number down?
Yeah, right now, this is where we are based on what other similar feasibility studies for wing addition projects have cost. So that's, that's the number that the MSBA gave us. They also gave us several communities to speak to that have been through a similar process. So we just want to be transparent and in October that this might be coming up in there. We could possibly for, for next week, try to get some amount approved. But the timeline that we're under, we, we felt that this was the best way to proceed and not have sort of a middle ground. Because we really want to get to December where they either invite us in or not, and then from there, we take that next step.
Because I know there have been like other studies in towns and it seems like a lot of money when you first study in a design.
Yeah, I, I will speak from my own experience, that, that is what is becoming the norm. Masco and for the Boxer DPW, the, the feasibility studies were one to two million dollars.
So we might want to have that, some other examples. Because I just think it, it just sounds like a very large number for a study in a design.
Yeah, one, one other question, do, do you know if there's any land issues? I, I know they've said where they'll put it, but like extending the building, are there any wetlands issues or any sort of issues with the ground? Or are we sure that the area they're gonna put it, there's nothing we have to do to the ground itself?
I think that's part of what the study will uncover, but everything we've been told to date is that there's not an issue.
The thirty thousand dollar study, which again, was very high overview. They weren't doing sampling and soil test. They, they didn't see an issue of it, but I think the, this next round would, would really dig into that.
I, I, I thought the thirty thousand dollar study had gone into the location of it and had looked at something with it.
They did. They felt like it was feasible to do it at the hood and there was, there wasn't an issue.
But they're not gonna get into the granularity.
They went to a schematic drawings.
But like wetlands, things like that, like where the location were, were fine on the, on maps.
We're not going back into the woods, it would be on that. You know, part of why the hood was considered from the outset was this, the foundation that's already there is very solid. And we felt that would be a good place to, to build. Any other questions?
No, I mean, maybe the only other thing, as we point out, where, you know, I did the walkthrough last year, is really. The, the existing spaces are absolutely unsuitable for anybody to be in. So I think this is really great steps for us to take, to try to figure out what those are. But, you know, there may be a notion of, you know, to Scott's point, spending any money on those, on that albatross of what's there is just, it's, it's. Bad money after bad. And it's not gonna extend the life of the schools and, and we'll have to figure out an alternative solution if, if MSBA doesn't select us. Because they're, they're not suitable for children or adults to be in, fairly good enough for storage.
We'd already come to that conclusion, it wasn't even presented to CIPC, but I did add it back in on recommendation today, just for those that are catching up to the full story. Just to say what happened, option one, so we wanted to keep that in.
Yeah, I think we just more or less, what they were doing in the study, just wanted to know, not feeling like we'd ever wanted to go that direction. What would actually be required and what that cost would be.
And are we, in that area, I'm just thinking about like what we're doing in the area right here, in the building right here. Where we're connecting the main, the, the waste management system to the other buildings. Do we have to extend the septic or anything like that with this new building project? Was that part of the feasibility study, what we're looking at, or are we good on that, those areas?
Wasn't mentioned specifically.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That says I tend to doubt it, but it was not, it didn't come up in the meeting.
No, it did not, I'm not, I'm unsure.
There's already, you know, there's, there's.
The number of students will probably be similar, right? Because like, yeah, it'd be adding a little bit, but, yeah.
But that's what the, the study would get into that in full detail.
I know this isn't the specific thing, but is there any update on like the work being done here for the wastewater project? Is that done now, or?
I believe the phase that's affecting the schools. They're working on the, the reseeding and sprinklers. I think we did lose our, our home connection, did that happen?
We did for a little bit, yeah.
I think the sprinklers should be operational now. No? Are you asking, I, I heard that they were.
Yes.
Right.
Anything else on this one?
Yeah, there's no vote on this. Okay. So let's go on to new business, we're gonna go through the twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six school committee goals. Review and approve goals. So why don't we? Go to the goals. Uh, okay, I will go through these. Just a reminder, we talked briefly about this a few weeks ago at our August meeting. Our overall plan here was to make goals more actionable, make them. Not specifically reduce the number of goals, but really make goals meaningful and actionable and, and, and ones that can be driven through. Through our ability to, to report off of them and, and make them measurable. So. Why don't we talk about leadership and government, governance in order to align with the North Running Public School District mission and vision for students. Learning, for student learning, the North Running School Committee will review, develop and implement policies and practices. That provide direction and tools for administrators to implement effective programs. That maximize student achievement, and for that, we have a, a few, few goals under there. The school committee will engage in one professional development presentation session related to student cell phone and social media use. And the related, and the related school committee, and the related school committee responsibilities for policy development and authority. Under master and laws in twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that has Tim and Noel next to it. And for these, we, we pick a, especially with those that have, for those that have more than one person on it. We also have a, a primary person or, or a leader for that specific goal. We think it's, it's better for, to have ownership of a, of a specific goal. So we have Tim leading and Noel is also on that. Any comments or questions or any revisions we want to make to that?
Do you want the star? Seeing if Noel wanted the star. Okay, all right, just making sure.
I think everybody gets a star at some point.
I mean, you, you definitely, when it comes to professional development, you're, you're the lead.
Thanks, Noel.
The next one, one point two, invite local state, local state representatives to a meeting of the North Running School Committee. In order to provide an update, the North Running Public Schools and to gather the latest information about what is happening at the state level. For that, Jennifer is leading, we also have, have Scott on there as well.
Riding her coattails.
All good. The next one, one dot three, to host a joint meeting of town boards in order to discuss relevant town issues. And engage in open dialogue about community financial needs. And that's Scott and I, and I'm, I've got the star on that one. But I'm listed second, that's a little weird. I don't think there are any questions, comments on that. Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna read through these, if people do have questions, just break in. The North Running School Committee will support long-term, will, will support a long-term plan and financial budget. In order to support the district's strategic plan, NRPS twenty thirty and other strategic initiatives. The action here, two dot one, have a five, a five-year budget outlook based on, upon the districts. The district need and aligned with NRPS twenty thirty, I think there's an apostrophe missing in there somewhere. And that's Tim and I, and Tim, you are leading that one, which is awesome. And then corollary, corollary to that. Thank you for adding the apostrophe. Real time.
Probably would get rid of the A on the next this one.
The school committee will, will continue to support the Student Opportunity Act goal. That describes the district's plan to reduce the kindergarten fees. Leading toward the eventual goal of providing full free, free, full day, very full day kindergarten. Will explore the next steps to increase access to universal free, pre-K. There's a reason why I would never make it on Master. And that's, I'm, I'm on that solo and I'm, I'm gonna obviously leave that. The next one is school committee will review all aspects of school transportation, including bus fees, contracts and rates. The process for route design and emerging topics such as the electric school bus pilot. The superintendent will prepare a presentation on this topic for the school committee and Scott is leading this.
Poor Michael.
I can't wait for my electric buses, Scott.
Poor Michael. Does anybody else have an interest in the bus contract? Or not?
Yes, but.
You're on a bunch already, but, yeah. We'll keep you updated as share anyway, so.
Next one are the educationally based goals. The goal here is the North Running School Committee will support the administration in its efforts to maximize the performance of each student. In all academic areas in order to meet the expectations set forth in the mission and vision of the North Running Public Schools. The actions here are, the school committee will actively participate in the working groups associated with the K through twelve action team. Of the community impact team. We do not have anybody listed on that.
Do we want to, or do we want to, just because, because there's different groups and people? I don't know.
Well, I mean, I. You can put me on there because I attend.
Noel wants a star.
I was gonna say, I think that was as a, as a whole, because some of us are on different ones, right?
And also, I think I wasn't here when you guys were signing these.
Yeah, I would, I, I, I think it's good to have at least one person listed as a leader, that way she can keep us to task.
There you go.
So when some of us aren't pulling our weight, specifically me, well, can, can start yelling at me. The school committee will review and revise its wireless device policies to address current issues related to the use of cell phones. And social media in school. The updated policy will serve as a measurable outcome. And the committee will follow the, the updates from proposed legislation. In order to maintain alignment with bell-to-bell policies that are currently being considered. Is that all one sentence? That's two sentences, okay. We've got Tim and Jennifer on there, do we want to have someone have a little star next to their name?
And I can't be on that because that would be free and it doesn't make sense for me to be on it because those are the two policy people, even though it's something I'm super interested in.
Do you, either of you want to?
But I mean, right, because it's a policy thing, so if these guys are on policy subcommittee.
Yeah, I think that's why the both of us are on that.
Which one, if you want a star?
I'm sorry, what?
Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
I mean, Tim has two stars right now, Jen has one, if you, if that matters to you.
This one's gonna be, this one's gonna be a team effort anyway.
Just telling you, I'm, I'm keeping track for you here, so. So give Jen the star then.
Okay. Okay, next are the family and community relation goals. So the goal, in order to continuously improve relationships with families and the community of North Running School Committee. The North Running School Committee will communicate openly, provide opportunities for feedback and foster active partnerships with students, parents, organizations and businesses. Okay, we've got the first one on here, school committee will share updated information with the public through social media channels and school events. To inform the public about school budget topics. Who wants an ownership?
I mean, so by definition, I suppose that's me and Jen.
You guys doing social media again another year?
We are, we're already.
It's all in policy, it's part of policy.
They're doomed with it.
You want the star this time then, Tim?
Yeah, it's already on there.
I pressed the post button, so I guess I'll.
The school committee will have an increased visibility as, at community events, NRNO, Town Day, et cetera. I will go on there as.
I'll go on there with you.
Yeah.
I'll take the star on that one.
People want to see me.
Who's telling you that?
Yeah, exactly.
We're just polling.
The school committee will review the school committee policies and structures in place related to school safety and support the implementation of the roles of school resource officer and community service sergeant. And Jennifer and I are on that one. You want that one?
Sure.
Jennifer gets the star. Joker, Joker, fifty dollars. You don't have to put my name twice.
You're getting deleted and you're not, you no longer have first rank in there.
And that is, that's it for the goals that we have. Yes.
Mr. Chair, through you, the role, the community service sergeant has a little bit less of a focus moving forward. I believe we're looking at possibly having two school resource officers in some capacity. I don't know if we want to just leave it as is until that's finalized or?
I would leave it until, until such time it changes.
Do you want to do and/or?
Yeah. It's the same.
Then if it changes.
I think the position's still there. I just.
Yeah, I'm not.
That, that role will probably have less with the schools and that there would be a second school resource officer.
If it changes, it's fine. I don't think we're violating anything here.
Nope.
Does change. Any other comments from anybody about what you've seen? Do you think we're missing anything? Do you think misalignment with individuals' ownership, anything?
Do you want a rundown of what the numbers are?
If you were.
I love that you have the running tally.
Everybody, everybody has three to five things they're assigned to. Jeff, Tim, Jen are stars on three. Noel and I are stars on one.
I have four.
I have three right now. You have four. And that, no, three stars.
Oh, okay.
And then, so three of four stars for you. And then everybody, everybody has three to five overall. So Jeff has three star, two other, Tim has three star, one other. I have one star, two others. Noel has one, two others. Tim has, or Jen has three with one.
Other.
Other.
Anyone want one of mine?
Again, I mean, some of them I think it makes sense because you're the chair, so like you're going to be in the meeting, so it's fine.
I'm totally fine.
Yeah.
I'm good with, I'm good with a.
Yeah, I think.
With mine. Does everybody feel comfortable?
And again, some of them are like going to other meetings, but like, you know, negotiating the bus contract will probably be a little bit more of a pain in the butt.
I'm not worried about it. Okay.
Doing something.
Okay, I think we need a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school committee goals.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all approved. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we have unanimous votes. Okay. Moving on to the next gen item, the nicotine-free generation, school committee will discuss the upcoming nicotine-free generation forums.
Sure. So the first public hearing with the Board of Health is actually tomorrow night here in this room at six-thirty.
Seven.
Seven? Six-thirty, seven? Well, if you're at six-thirty, you're early. Actually, I think it is six-thirty. Hold on.
You could be right.
It's seven.
It's seven?
I'll double check.
But we, I think we wanted to discuss, you know, as a school committee, obviously, this policy, if passed, would affect students and children in the community. So I know there's been discussion, discussion at the Substance Abuse Coalition, if the school committee, what their opinion is or things like that. I'm going to say that I'm going to the hearing tomorrow. I will speak on behalf of myself, but also as a member of the school committee, but not speaking for the board. And I think that makes sense, being on the Substance Abuse Coalition, being the school committee's representative. I know there's, you know, there's a different side to this and there's different, it's boiling up in town a little bit, I think. I think the seventeen other cities and towns, all but two have passed it through Board of Health and two have done non-meeting. So they're trying to get these in, you know. I think there's at least this one, another one at night, and then another one during the day. So there's ample opportunity for people to come and share their points of view.
I can speak from my perspective. I'd, I'd like to get more information.
Sure.
About it. I will say knowing the impact this has sort of outside of the school, I think the appropriate place is through Board of Health. But obviously with the, with the impact to students, it is there, but that's, that to me is the educational element of it.
Yep.
So as to whether the, I'm not prepared to bring up a vote to say we approve.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, this is more educational.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. Others?
Yeah, I mean, I do think the initial, I do feel like the impact will be greater to outside of the schools as well. So I think it'll be interesting to see if anyone shows up that has a vested interest in schools, you know, parents or whatnot to, if there'll be anyone who even shows up.
I know. So I, I think, I think.
Interesting too.
I think that the business community in town is mobilizing. I think they'll, I think some people will show, show up for that. But as I said, it's three different hearings, so people have plenty of time to, to voice their opinion and be heard.
That's fair.
So I think, these are four because the Board of Health had, had asked to, because they, they want to be able to hear from the public.
I, I know that in the initial invitation, it was they want us to speak sort of uniformly as a board or whatever, and I think it's, it's good that you're, that you're on there and you're talking. I mean, I'm going to attend similar to you. I'm attending to educate myself on it. But yeah, to me, it's, it's, let's learn more.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm woefully ignorant on it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could definitely learn more. And I, and I will say, I will push back a little bit about having more impact outside the school where we do all listen to Amy come and give the, the, the presentation every year. And just in the two years I've been here, the, the two presentations, I'm shocked about like the ages of, of things like that and, and, you know, what goes on. So you know, from my perspective, being part of the coalition, that's where I'm coming from, also from my public health background.
No, no, that's fair.
You know, I, I'll give my thoughts. I mean, I, I mean, first and foremost, I don't think the school committee should be, take a action on it personally. I think it's outside of what we do and it's a slippery slope and I'm always worried about that. Like, I just think that again, it's, I think, I think the idea is a very interesting idea. I do not like nicotine at all. I've never smoked or done anything. I don't want my kids doing it. So I think it's a really interesting way of doing it. I think the concern I have is whether it should be city by city or state by state or country. And so I just worry about the impact on businesses of like one business can't sell and then, you know, again, if in ten years, there's ten years of people that are, you know, eighteen to twenty-eight, they can't buy in North Reading, but they can buy in Andover. Again, I think that's the pushback, so I don't know. I mean, I, I would love there to be no nicotine overall. And so, I don't know, I mean, it's funny because this kind of hearkens back, I don't know if anybody was even on the committee with me, but like beginning of COVID and like face masks and talking about like, you know, us regulating a public health thing in North Reading versus, you know, in Andover, they'd have a different policy and, you know, we'll make it a different policy. And so at that point in time, my thought was like, it's not really our, our, you know, say on it. And so, I don't know, but I'm, I'm I don't a hundred percent know what my opinions are. Like, I hate nicotine and I would love for nicotine to just go away. But when I get down to like, if it's just going to be the one town makes it go, goes away and somebody owns the business here, I think it's challenging.
Well, so right now it's seventeen and I think that's the point. I think that's a lot of public health measures start at the local level. Like it's not going to be state, country. Like, it's, it's got to start somewhere. And right now they have seventeen towns, so they have some momentum. And a lot of those seventeen towns are in this area. And so I think that, you know, that's how it starts.
No, I get it. And so.
Is there a list of towns?
Um, there is. Yes, there is. It's on the QR code for the hearing, but I can send it to you.
No, no, I'll look it up.
It's interesting. It's kind of like the flip of North Reading used to be one of the only places you could buy alcohol on, on.
On Sundays, yeah.
And, and so, but I don't, I, so that became, people would come to North Reading to buy alcohol. So it's, it would be very interesting with communities that are joining because I agree with you, a state, state versus community. Even though I also agree with you, Jen, that community starts in the community up, that, that kind of pits town against town a little bit, so.
Yeah.
So just, that is the public, but I grew up in a dry town. So to me, this is, hearkens back to actually where I grew up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yes, for very different reasons, those laws went back two hundred years and all of that, but.
And did that make a difference? Did people, was there less?
Uh, topic for a different, probably a different forum, but yes and no. Yes and no. I mean, clearly it, it had an impact if I'm talking about it, right? But it's, it, yeah. Happy to talk about it at some point. Yes.
Just to clarify, what did you say was the QR code?
Oh, I think on the QR code, if you look, it's the list of different towns.
Oh.
Have adopted it.
Uh, Tim?
I think, so I, I honestly, I don't have an opinion on this specific topic yet and I kind of look forward to getting educated on it because I've heard kind of arguments, every argument that's been made so far right here. So I look forward to being more educated on it. And I, I realize we were under the gun on deciding whether or not to post, so I guess I'm going to talk more generically now. I'm, I'm concerned, we did post, right? My, you know, and I think it was a good forum for all five of us to discuss this, is really my preference would be when we talk about public forums, public meetings like this, you know, I would prefer that we approach this, that debate and anything with respect to what the school committee does remains at these meetings and that we're allowed to go to these public meetings and not post. So we have the opportunity to hear from whatever it is, whether it's nicotine-free generation, whether it's cellphone use, whether it's pick the topic that we don't know about from twelve months, because you know, there's, I really have two main concerns. One, when we post for meetings like this, it almost gives the implication that school committee is for or against something simply by posting. Right? And that does give a perception, right or wrong, right? And we can debate whether that's right or wrong, but I think it does give that perception. So if it's a meeting about something positive or about something, that we don't want to do something, by posting, it kind of gives that perception that the school committee has already kind of made a decision on how they want to go. And I think our discussion, discussion should be held here. I think we should be able to go to those meetings, learn, get educated, not debate in those meetings and then bring it back. This should be the forum where we post and have these types of discussions. And that would be my preference. So then that way we're all free to go to any meeting we want. And then conversely, if we don't post for a meeting, does it give that organization the perception that we don't care about what they want to do? So I think it's a slip, you know, it's a precedence, one that Scott, you kind of use all the time. I would prefer that we remain, keep our debate here. If we choose to have a discussion about it and then allow us to go as members of the community and, and, you know, looking at the open meeting law, we can certainly do that. As long as we don't engage in, in dialogue back and forth in those meetings, it's well within our rights and we don't need to post. It allows us to get educated and then bring the discussion back.
I want to clarify one thing quick on open meeting law. We can actually debate about things that are not our topic.
Correct, right.
And so, and that's, that's the issue. Like, I think the question here is like, is this something that's before us or not? Like, if we want to go to a community on like, whether the Red Sox are going to win the playoffs or who should start game one of the playoffs, we can all go in public and debate about that because it's not something that's before us as a school committee. So if we say very clearly, this is not an issue that we're going to, that's before us, we can all go, we don't have to post, we can debate as well.
But even if it is.
We just can't debate, we just can't debate things that are actually our issues outside of a posted meeting. And so.
Right, when you look at Mass.gov, it's clear on that. If we can't debate with each other, you could make your opinion known to the community and that doesn't violate open meetings. Actually, you can't. If it's within your jurisdiction, you can't speak. That's my understanding. No, I mean, we can pull up. You can not, note that the expression of an opinion on matters which, within the body's jurisdiction to a quorum of a public body is a deliberation, even if no other public body member responds. All right, I can pull up that, because they had a frequent ask question about, about that and I had it. So I think it's a question of whether it's within the jurisdiction or not. If someone is speaking at that meeting and expressing their opinion, that.
But we're saying tonight that we're not taking a vote on it. And so I think right now we're saying it's not something that's before us either way.
Yeah, because we shouldn't have to decide before we go to a meeting if we're going to speak. Like, what if you go and you learn something about it and you feel compelled to?
Well, I.
You couldn't do.
The problem is we have to post a meeting. The problem is the timing one for this. Because we have to post a meeting if we're going to have one within a certain amount of time. And yet, we didn't have this discussion till now, so.
Oh, okay, I see. Yeah, 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 okay.
So.
But I think if it, if it's ever going to come before you, you can't have it deliberated in public.
But I don't think this is ever going to come before us. It's, it's a decision.
It may, and it may not.
Yeah.
This was more of a.
Precautionary.
And this was, this is me, more than anybody. So blame me. But it, it's more a matter of not knowing whether this would come ahead, come before us. And Tim, to your point, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't necessarily know that I agree that us posting a meeting is tacit approval of the content of that meeting. But your point is still fair. I'm not really sure I'm right on that.
I think one can take the perception that by posting, you're either, right? And I worry about, there's many forums held throughout town that we may want to go to.
I think it's fair. I don't necessarily know I agree with the conclusion, but it is a fair premise that I still may not agree with.
I think, I think, I, I think the conclusion of a posted meeting is that it's, it's an issue before us. It's one of our issues.
That, that is.
And that's what we're saying. It's not really.
We're saying it's not, but we didn't have a discussion on that until it was too late to make it.
This one, I totally understand. We're under the gun to decide. I have no issue.
Yeah, yeah. But generally speaking.
Generally speaking, that's where, to me, I think it's a slippery slope when we start posting at all of these forums.
No, no, no.
There's no shortage of them.
No, no, I, I think that's a fair comment and if we have enough time a month, days ahead to have that discussion. Because we can't do it, because we can't have that discussion through other media because then that unto itself becomes a meeting, so.
So I just want to be clear, when I'm speaking tomorrow, I'm speaking as myself, but as, I mean, it would be weird to not say I'm a member of the school committee and, and the representative of the Substance Abuse Coalition.
I think with anything, you can just say, this is who I am and here are my thoughts. And so it'll be interesting when we have our professional development presentation, if this has something to do with the authority that we have under MGL. So that could be part of the professional development that we're going with.
That would be very smart. Mr. Chair, through you.
Yes.
I, I would think if you ever were to take a position on supporting this or not, you would not be able to discuss it at this forum or share your personal opinions or opinions in, if there's three of you there. If you ever planned on taking a position.
Correct, if we decided in the future.
Which is what makes it very tricky. So whether it's under your jurisdiction, obviously if it was about budget, that would be very clear. You couldn't do that without it being posted. So it's, it's, it's a very tricky one. And if you're just all going to attend, the easiest thing to do is just attend and not speak. But once any one of you speaks on the topic, that's deliberation. That's my understanding.
That's not easy for me to do.
Like, I guess where I'm coming from, because that was the interpretation I had, but then if you look at Mass.gov and they give an example where they say, a communication directed at the broader public is generally permissible, even if a quorum of the speaker's own public body incidentally hears or reads a communication, as long as the other public body members do not respond. So if a public body participates in a candidate forum or similar public event and other members of that body are attending the forum or the event, the member may direct their comments to the public. And then there's, it goes on. So, because they, you know, their, the premise on Mass.gov, the state legislature is your First Amendment rights supersede open meeting law. So if you're speaking to the community to the open forum, that is permissible. It's when dialogue happens within those meetings, that's when it becomes debate. So I mean, we can certainly talk about it more.
We were all at, well, some of us were at like the candidate forums.
Correct. That's where I'm coming from, is it's a slippery slope of.
I didn't debate Noel there.
Right.
No, but like, we asked questions. I asked questions and we were all there.
Yeah, it's interesting. Is there an, is there a virtual option for it?
There is.
Not, not for, not for tomorrow night, but there may be for one in the future.
Unless my meeting gets canceled, I'm going to be in the meeting.
All right. Anything else on this topic? Good discussion? Very good discussion and I really appreciate it. Thank you all. There's no vote on this one, so we're going to keep moving on. To routine matters, so minutes, we're going to catch up on some minutes.
I can do that.
So we've got the August twenty-fifth open session.
Moved to approve the meeting minutes for the August twenty-fifth open session. That's written.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those who, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five, zero.
Moved to approve the August twenty-fifth. Move to approve the August twenty-fifth, um, minutes from the goals workshop as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Uh, the executive session.
Um, move to approve the minutes from the August twenty, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five executive session as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
All right, um, move to approve the meeting minutes from September eighth, um, twenty twenty-five open session.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstained from that, I wasn't there.
Um, so, uh, all those, yeah, all those opposed, saying aye, and so we have, uh, four zero vote on, on the open session.
Okay, um, move to approve the.
Who wasn't there?
I wasn't.
No abstain, I'm, I'm great.
Um, move to approve the meeting min- minutes from September eighth, twenty twenty-five executive session as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, I'm gonna abstain.
Yeah, four zero, excluding Noel. Uh, that moves us to budget update. Mr. Connolly.
Great, thank you. So the first budget update of fiscal year twenty twenty-six is included in your packet. Um, again, it summarizes activity broken down through expenses and payroll. Um, as we approach the end of the first quarter, the end of September here, this reflects kind of activity through the middle of September. Um, you, everything is sort of trending, uh, sort of as we sort of budgeted and predicted, as typical, there's always some, um, unpristine expenses, or things that do arise, particularly in the area of special education, and, um, out-of-district costs, but, um, at this point, given some of the actions we, we typically take at the end of each fiscal year, and perform some, some prepayments with some funds that are available, I think we are, uh, certainly in good shape to address some of the expenses that we're seeing. Um, and we are starting to see, as we approach the end of the fiscal year, some, some, you know, maintenance costs, you know, prop up, and the need to maybe dip into the extraordinary maintenance, uh, budget line. Uh, but overall, I think, um, you know, the, the departments and the schools are encumbering funds in the instructional area for technology, materials, and supplies, so there's certainly balances there, but that's typical in those areas, like professional development and so forth. But, um, I think we're certainly off to a, uh, you know, a start that the predicted expenses are within budget, as, as we really approach the end of the first quarter of the, of the fiscal year. Um, so with that, I was just opening up to any questions?
To Mr. Connolly, same as last meeting, update on the buses, like, in terms of waitlist, and number two, um, have you heard any complaints about any fees, buses, any other user fees?
So I have not heard any, I guess I'll take the last question first, not heard any, uh, complaints on the, on the user fees, the bus, the busing, performing arts, um, extracurricular athletics. Um, so that, that hasn't made it way to me, we did the, the late bus registration, um, since the last meeting. Um, and that's gonna start on Wednesday this week, October first, so those routes are out there, they're published, it's been communicated. Um, that enrollment is down, tip, I think, as, uh, the user, because we are paying. Yeah, it's a late bus.
How much is it down?
I think we have about fifty-five registered, um.
Were you saying we needed to run it?
We were hoping that we'd get a hundred or so, then be fifty per bus, so typically, when we've opened it up in the previously, and you kind of got that ability with your pass.
Right.
For middle school only, the, the hundred spots or so were, were filled pretty quickly. So I think we might be closer to sixty, the last update I got from Rosley.
In the past, this is one that sort of started off a little slow, but then picked up as the year goes on a little bit, as activity kind of, but.
When we opened it up, it, it filled pretty quick, because it was free, but the, the ridership started slow. So we, even though we had a hundred, a hundred and ten that would register, and then when they, we, we had a big waitlist of thirty, forty, or fifty. Um, we didn't open it up to everyone initially, we waited to see what the ridership was, so that would start slow, and then it would build. So, um, I'm not surprised that now that you're, they're paying a fee, because I think they kind of did it, most families did it as kind of an emergency or backup. So, um, but that's allowed us to kind of really streamline the routes and make them more efficient, and, um, make them faster for families that are using it.
Do we need two, need two buses, or no?
I think we need two buses based on the geog- the geography of the location, yes.
If it doesn't fill, would you offer it again in the spring? Like, people have different schedules than they might in the fall, and see if there's.
Yeah, it's a roll, and right now, is we're not closing it, so the registration's sort of, it's open. Um, until we reach capacity, we wouldn't close it, or we could, we could keep that registration open, um, to for families. So, but it is gonna start on Wednesday. So, and then, the other question, the late, um, for the regular school bus, the, the waitlist is still about the same, is it's about, I wanna say about ten students on the, on the waitlist.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just to be fair, Michael, I think we have received a couple of, um, emails that have been shared with us about the, the fees that are associated.
About not allowing a check option, or?
Yeah, the, the, there was a fee for, um, with our provider, Unibank, when, when the, it met a certain threshold, there is now a percentage fee with My School Bucks, which is a system we're now using, um, in order to streamline the whole process for registration, we're spending a lot of time chasing down people who had not paid, because they're registering and not paying, we had to streamline that system to make it all part of all-in-one, to do that paying online, it's paying a, a fee.
Credit card.
Uh, and so, you know, it's something to consider in the future, as we, you know, if we ever have to increase fees again, that we just consider that, um, that percentage possibly, you know, it, it was, it was mentioned that it was disingenuous to have a two hundred dollar fee raised, but then there's also a fee on top of that. None of us like fees, um, you know, or of any kind, so a credit card fee, a charge fee. There was no option to do pay-by-bank account for no fee, or something like that, so.
Yeah.
That, but that was brought to our attention, but.
Yeah. For me, I'm, I mean, similar to the questions that have asked, and asked, I'm, I'm more interested in like the sort of mid-year, end-year assessment of whether participation goes down, uh, and it's tough to say exactly why uh, participation goes down, but obviously, if we've raised fees, it would be interesting to see if there's potential impact to that.
Yeah.
But we, I don't think we'll know that for a while.
Oh, wow, I definitely didn't see it in the regular busing, obviously, the late bus, yes, but the, the regular optional busing program.
But even, even, uh, activities, all of that, which.
Sure.
We're not gonna know, just, you know. Excellent. Any other questions? Excellent.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Uh, excellent, so why don't we go back to staffing from here, there's a, a pretty large list of staffing, uh, specific staffing updates, uh, Dr. Daly, do you wanna?
Sure, I can just share it here, do you want me to go through all the appointments, some of these are.
I don't know that we need to go through.
So I just, I'll just share up here on the screen, we have some, uh, hires, long-term substitutes that are filling in for people that are on leaves. Um, and we also have our, um, appointments to, um, coaching appointments, that's something that we share here. So a lot of these folks are returning, few positions after many.
Including someone in this room.
Cindy, what are you coaching? Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, from here, uh, we're gonna go into bins and donations.
Okay, buckle up, because we have eleven of them, and some very generous run ones at that, so, here we go.
Excellent.
All right, got your, ready to go, Cindy, we're gonna have to be going fast and furious here.
I second.
All right, ready? All right, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars from the Bachelor Parent Organization to be used towards a kindergarten field trip to Smolak Farm.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of twenty-five thousand dollars from Cummings Foundation Grants Incorporated to be used towards the North Reading High School's Performing Arts Program in memory of Andrea Mills.
Wow, that's awesome. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of BCI and snap circuits in the amount of one thousand sixty-two dollars and sixty-six cents from donorschoose.com to be used for a classroom activity.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation from Ryer Store J. Duffley of two hundred dollars to be to, put towards the band club at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of fifteen hundred dollars from the North Reading Middle School Parent Association to be put towards the eighth grade field trip transportation to Harold Park.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of eleven thousand dol- eleven thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents from the North Reading Diamond Club to be put towards the Cary Park Fall Maintenance, completed by Sports Turf Specialties.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing, uh, five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of five hundred dollars from the North Reading Touchdown Club to be used towards a huddle camera for away games.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass it five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of five hundred dollars from the North Reading Girl Soccer Boosters to be used towards a huddle camera for away games.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, uh, any discussion?
Are these an our huddle, or their huddle?
I know, right?
Is this how you're, uh, getting information?
Any advantage we can, we can get. Um, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of five hundred dollars from the North Reading Hockey Boosters to be used towards a huddle camera for away games.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of seventy-five dollars from Julie's Book Club Ladies for boys tennis in honors of Molly Whitney.
Second.
We have, uh, and, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero.
Last one. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars from the Bachelor Parent Organization to be used towards the playground project for the Bachelor School from Lopez Landscaping.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion?
Just in general, uh, thank you for all of the generosity across the board, this was a significant amount of donations uh, that we desperately need to continue to run these programs.
No, no, I, let me just say, we go quickly through these, because there's a pro forma element to them, we appreciate everyone. We deeply appreciate everyone, so, so thank you to anybody who participated in any of these donations, thank you very much. Uh, any other?
Did we vote on that? No.
Not yet.
Okay.
Um, hearing no further discussion, um, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass it five zero.
I'm sorry, there's seven more that just came in, Jeff, so.
All good. Uh, it doesn't appear like we have any grants, uh, or overnight trip requests. Um, any school commedia, uh, school committee, social media?
I mean, honestly, outside of the meetings that we've been posting, just to, to try to drum up some attendance, I think, when, I think, starting next meeting, when we start getting some presentation, we'll have more.
Yeah.
More information, and as budget items start coming to light through the fall, I don't know if there's anything specific that everybody was looking for. We, we did post the meetings through the end of October, um, to social media.
Cool.
Mr. Freeman, I, I could try to put together an infographic based on the modular piece.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that seems like something we might wanna. Yeah.
We're gonna recognize the professional status teachers, like, uh, info on that, too.
That could be something, yeah.
Can do that, too.
Yeah.
That's a good, bit of good news, right?
Yeah.
If you can get me a list of, uh, names, Dr. Daly will make sure.
We can do that.
Awesome. Uh, subcommittee updates, uh, Tim, do you wanna do an update from our last, uh, finance planning?
Oh, now we're going back into memory banks.
I know, right?
It seems like so long ago, and it's still September, uh.
Got plenty of money for next year, right?
Right, met earlier this month, right, basically going through, reviewing all of the warrant articles, uh, walking up the town meeting. Uh, the information session is happening right now, uh, so we will, uh, probably head over in time to go discuss article, what are we, thirteen or fourteen? I can't remember our number, um, but really, you know, um, most of, most of this was really a discussion of, um, balance, balancing the budget for, for warrant articles going into fall town meeting, um, the discussion of, of, um, of the modular project from the, from us, um, and then just, you know, an initial intake, you know, definitely, there is a, a revenue gap that we're identifying from the, from the receipts to date, no, probably no surprise for those of you that have seen the bar charts for the last several years. Um, we, I know we're getting to it, but we'll be meeting again, I believe, this Friday, and we'll continue to work towards, you know, starting budget season, and really what these gaps mean, and, and how we, uh, choose to proceed forward, uh, as we, uh, try to balance the budget and, uh, head towards NRPS twenty thirty. I know Jeff, did I, what did I miss?
No, no, that's good, uh, you know, I, I will say not discussed in that meeting, but, you know, one thing that I think we're gonna have to watch out for is, uh, healthcare, which we caught a, caught a nice break on by switching providers. I don't think we can go to that well every year, and just bounce between providers, so my guess is that will be a little fun topic as well, but.
How was that transition overall? Did that go okay, Dr. Daly, the transition?
It has so far, so good.
Um.
I, I guess one more thing before we move on to, I think that, just as we kind of foresaw when we go, went through the budget, the, on the municipal side, a lot of the cash generating revenue that was, um, removed from the budget, we're, we're cer- certainly seeing that already, that we're not seeing the free cash that we were expected to see, that's kind of obvious when you look at what was cut going into last year's town meeting, a lot of the overtime, things like that, so, you know, certainly, free cash is a big ticket item with, uh, the, you know, finance team, so how, you know, how do we, how do we manage through that situation with, uh, with the reduced free cash going into this year, and acknowledging that on the municipal side, you know, deeper cuts would need to be made to, to continue to balance the budget.
Excellent. Better update than I ever could have given. Um, athletic subcommittee, either one of you, wanna give this one?
We haven't had a meeting since the last athletic sub, I honestly can't remember.
It was, yeah, it was a good one.
Was that the same day as, uh?
It was the same day as finance planning, what did we talk about? I can't remember, someone refresh my memory, September twelfth seems so long ago.
We were brought, introduced to, uh, the new AD, we.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, eighth grade waivers, um, really good discussion there, I know there's a, we have a, a very deep, uh, in the middle school level, there, there's a strong desire for, for JV, and, and those waivers are kind of an important thing, is we wanna make sure that we're getting the right waivers in place for the students to play at that, at the level where they should be playing, where it's appropriate, so I know that was a big discussion. Uh, the, the, the wall is complete, which I know that was in the gym, right, so we can, uh, effectively use the, the wall in the, in the gym over here, or down the hall over here. Um, so we're no longer breaking drywall and getting facilities mad, um, and then we delayed the lacrosse wall. So that, we'll bring that back up, I'm assuming that'll come back around for the spring.
Mm-hmm.
Keep, keep, it's been, it's been delayed for a while now.
Yeah, just trying to vote right location, the funding source, all those things need to, still be kind of worked out.
Um, excellent, so, uh, the subcommittee's schedule, um, Dr. Daly, as I'm looking at this, am I right in saying that the parent advisory council is the same time as the finance planning team?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll have to figure that out.
I, I'm not gonna be able to be there for the whole thing.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine, okay, um, 'cause I've got the same, clearly, if I'm mentioning it, I've got the same conflict, okay. Okay, fair enough, um, so we've got the finance planning team is scheduled for October third at eight AM. Uh, obviously, to sort of a pre-game before, uh, before, uh, town meeting, uh, which is Monday of next week, the fine arts subcommittee is scheduled to meet on October seventh at three fifteen, and the athletics subcommittee is scheduled for November eighteenth, that's far enough out that we'll never remember it right now, but that's fine. That's far enough out that we'll never remember it right now, but that's fine. 12:30 PM. And administrative reports.
A couple of items here. I wanted to share that we, we have preliminary set the date of November 3rd at 5:30 PM. You might wanna check your calendar, see if you have the, that would be for a, a small celebration of the 10th year anniversary of opening this building. And we're also going to try to piggyback that with a celebration of dedication of the multipurpose field for Mr. Karuji.
Oh, that's great.
So it's a, it's a day that worked with the athletic schedule and several other schedules. So we're working on, Mr. Campabasso, Dr. Meyer have done a great job kind of pulling together some information. And we're gonna send out, the art department is working on some save the dates, so they're coming out very soon, but I wanted to share that here. Our guests of honor are aware of the dates, and then former school committee members, former building committee members, obviously select board members, everyone who was involved in that process is, obviously, anyone is invited to come celebrate. What's hard to believe is that now we've opened the high school and the middle school now for 10 years, so.
That's awesome.
I also just wanted to share, so this is a little bit different format. I'm going to do this for some of the meetings, but a quick update on the district school websites. We have now moved to October 31st as our transition date for the new website. None of the direct links are going to change, but the, the outlook of the, the site will be changing. So we're working very hard on all of the, the transitions. And I have asked our schools to do a bit of the update as well, sort of a new approach. So there are just some updates here from each of the five schools. So the LD Batch Elder School is sharing about how excited they are to welcome their new students and kindergartners, and some new staff members getting a shout-out there, as well as an update of an, an updated Bulldog Core Value System at that school. The Hood School is sharing that some of the new teachers that they've added to the, to the building. So they're sharing all that information out. Recently held a PA Social for Pizza and Ice Cream with the Parents Association, and they have their first school-wide spirit day on October 1st. Little School Assembly is sharing all the students that they're welcoming to the school. Some of their new teachers are described here as well. They had a back-to-school night, which was a great success. Looking forward to October 3rd, when they are gonna have a first all-school, all-school morning meeting and celebrating the Rock Your School Day. The students are dressing up as rock stars while teachers bring lessons to life, creative ways to spark curiosity, inspire level learning.
Look around there.
Middle School shared out their clubs and activities, and click on that link, we'll bring you to a lot more information about the many different offerings from this year. High School is sharing out welcoming some new teachers that are, that are in the building, some that have come from the middle school, as well as some new teachers that have been hired. They've just held their Clubs and Activities Fair. I, I wanted to mention also, the student report mentioned this, we do have one new student rep who's a sophomore, so that's great. The, the majority of our students are seniors and juniors, so having someone to carry on that legacy is great to join that group. There's a back-to-school night on the 18th, and Notorious performed during eight-minute intermissions. We have their internship program is underway at the high school. Sixty seniors are going out to chosen placements. The musical for Like Water, Water for Elephants are complete. Fall sports are all, all underway. The Niasca accreditation team will be visiting October 27th and 28th. And so we're excited to show off our programming for that piece as well. So I'm gonna try this maybe once a month at least to just have an update from each school in addition to, to my pieces.
That's nice.
Thank you to our principals and assistant principals for helping to complete this report.
I will say, I was away last year for back-to-school night for a middle school, but got to experience the bell system this time. Wonderfully run, and I'm sure that was true of, of all the schools, but just certainly for the middle school. It was, I, I thought it was a great night, so. Since all of you basically were there, too.
Yeah. I think you ran it every single one.
Yeah, we, we were all there, so.
Good thing we didn't discuss anything.
Oh, is that what we did? Told you not to talk to me. All right, so back to the agenda, future business, correspondence. I don't see, do we have any this time? Future business, we talked about nicotine-free generation, that's tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, did we say?
Yeah.
Seven PM, yeah.
Great, we've got town meeting next week on the 6th. And that's at 6:45, is that?
Pardon me?
Pardon me?
We're meeting at 6:45 before town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. So that'll be fun. I'm sure I'll bring candy. October 27th, we're moving, he's formatting while I'm reading it. Elementary school plan, so that's a regularly scheduled meeting here, 6:30. And then November 10th, we've got a regularly scheduled meeting, again, 6:30. We're gonna do the secondary school improvement plan, presentations and capital improvement, as well as MCAS and accountability, always a fun night. So I think that's it. Any, missed anything?
That is all. The, the scores are, are coming out publicly. There will be information, as we said before, this is sort of our presentation on accountability. What we're doing next is we are, at the school level, Mr. Clean's already put out something, schools are looking at data, analyzing it, coming up with a unified response, and then we present that unified response to you. But if there's any questions that come up about our scores, you know, we continue to, to do, to do well in our standardized assessments, and we'll be sharing that with you as well, as our accountability at that evening.
Perfect. All right, looking to, for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Five zero. Adjourned.